To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wyatt.
Here.
Angel is absent, Reese is present, Stabell.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poked. Consent agenda, anything to remove? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted an update on Chrissy's progress at Capella.
I have two classes left, I will be done in September.
Yay!
So happy.
And still carrying a grade point of?
Three point eight eight nine.
Great.
Whenever we do one of those expenditures, I just love to put a record where we're at. So then after September, you've got your degree and we're done?
Camera on.
Yeah.
Congratulations by the way.
Yes.
Keep up the good work.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poked. Got a few people to welcome tonight. Citizens request and oral presentations, Leon you wanted to address, I know.
I did. Thank you. Leon Nelson, forty-four, forty-one, Randshire Road. It's not open for a public hearing tonight on the issue of the Echo Development, but take this opportunity to talk about it just a little bit because there really has not been enough communication on it. Just the minutes of the meeting, or the agenda of the meeting that came on Friday, I think, is the first I'd heard that there'd been a change of plan and there was thought of putting in apartment buildings in what has been zone commercial. I understand that apartment buildings are a proper and accepted use for commercial zoning and for that reason it doesn't need to go to planning and zoning, so we skipped the public hearing there. And at the time we were doing Echo Development, I can recall the discussion, they said, "Don't worry about the details because this is all planned development and we get to go back and revisit it all." Well, I guess maybe not so much. Another thing I've discovered is because the land and subject land is less than five acres, it doesn't have to be reviewed for planned development. Surprise number two. Now, I'm real concerned about putting apartment buildings back there. That is almost doubling the population of Echo Developments Twin Oaks. That's a lot of people in those apartment buildings. What is it, it's four twelve-plex buildings and seven ten-plex buildings, I believe? That's a lot of people. I don't see Ryder Road being able to handle that amount of traffic. It's double the amount of traffic we planned when we set out to do that development. We've not done a good job keeping the North Tier informed on this. It comes as a surprise. I passed the word around to a few people, but I'm concerned about it. I don't think it's the way to do business.
I'll make a couple of comments on it.
Please.
The lot where the four twelve-plexes are intended to go had been planned for probably a high-rise fifty under apartment complex.
I heard that today for the first time too.
Okay, I think we had discussions on that, not. The other lot where those seven ten-plexes go had been intended for hopefully hotel, restaurant, and event center. I would think that might even be more traffic than the seven ten-plexes. I may be wrong on that too.
At peak times, I would agree with you, but not every morning and evening.
There will be public hearings when we bring through the development agreement because what we're reviewing tonight is conceptual. To have the formal development agreement, that will take public hearings to go through that.
In addition to public hearings, we ought to probably notify the people in adjoining properties.
There are no adjoining properties though because it's the backside of the, it's the north side of everything.
Those adjoining Echo, or Twin Oaks Division, we've done that in the past.
Technically, the two lots, the notifications are normally notifications within three hundred feet.
That's correct.
That'd be the northern side if you look at, I don't recall us looking at that whole development as far as the three hundred feet.
I'll pay for the stamps.
All right. Comments or notes? Jack, did you have anything related to Randshire? Did you have anything related?
Yeah, just comments regarding the PD and all. All the time, I think PD came into our forefront when Bob was here and the standard comment was if it's planned development, everybody gets a second chance to review things. Well, it didn't happen this time and I understand why it didn't happen, but I don't agree with it. And so I'll chime in with Leon's notification or communication regarding this thing. It's not been in the Herald that I've known, that I've seen, other than the minutes will be in there obviously, but I would think that we could do a better job communication-wise. And furthermore, I guess I'm questioning minor platting, so I'd like your comments on what, I'm sorry, the plating. Why, or will there be more plating that gets reviewed because this is not what the original plat has on it?
We'll check with Chrissy and attorney and see what's required and what's most appropriate for that. I'm not up to stuff it up on it. Justin, were you HMEU or?
Spectator.
Okay. Anything else, Jack? Okay, thanks. Tom, you want to talk HMEU and I presume that's what the rest of you might be here for. So I'll open it for whoever wishes to talk, as long as you don't spend a lot of time repeating yourselves across.
About a year we started with HMEU with high utility bills, representing upper ridges states, community church of Hudson, and my own personal computing company. Trying to get a resolution on high utility bills and no discounts for all electric rates. We're being punished to have all electric rates in our community right now. They also stopped development and we have fifteen acres left developed and we are planning to finish that this winter. And now they tell us we can't do that again with them. They've stopped their utility installations. So we've got another twenty-six hovel or twenty-six lots that we could develop that we're, had to find a way to work through that with somebody and it's not them. So from my knowledge, the city council has control of HMEU, so we're asking the city council's help to either disband the board or make the board do what they're supposed to do. Listen to citizens of Hudson.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Did they tell you they won't develop it or they just don't have the rebates back for the development?
They told no development, what I was told by Mr. Corey.
Really? Interesting. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't, I hadn't heard that, so thank you.
Yeah, I hadn't heard either. I know they passed in the last minutes as far as now rebates.
I know I saw no rebates, but I didn't.
I saw the new rebates too.
But I didn't hear anybody ever say that to us, at least that they, because that was another thing that we said we wouldn't have approved.
There seemed to be some discrepancy on what they charge and what they give back, or should they give back everything they receive, that is not a true statement. The first development paid forty-five thousand dollars for thirty-eight lots. Later we paid eighty-five thousand dollars for twenty-six lots and they're rebating us about thirteen hundred and some change back on that, so they're not getting, so their bookkeeping is a little bit.
Longy.
Yeah. It's not George proof.
Take that as a compliment or a? Anybody else? DJ.
Hi, DJ Holbach, representing Randall's, Holbach Enterprises and Five Brothers Properties. Just to be blunt, our rates have increased about forty percent, about thirty-five to forty percent as a very, at higher end power user, which is cutting directly into our bottom line. Oh, excuse me. Payroll, not being able to hire the help at the right wages, of course, eat money out of our checking account, sometimes savings. Something has to change, so I'm asking the city council to really get involved and do what's necessary with HEMU. That's the short of it. Thank you.
I live over on Pleasant Lane and I have a two-level house, but, and I have a son that lives with me, but he works all day. And mine's running a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month and mine's not an all-electric house. And I think that that's pretty high for, I mean, we have a couple TVs that my son runs when he comes home and stuff like that. But that's, that seems like, because I moved from Waterloo and of course I moved from a mobile home to a much bigger house, but still, I think a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month is quite a amount.
Doug?
Doug, you've been in Hudson for forty-one years. I practice here for thirty-eight of them. I'm here just as a private citizen now, retired three years ago. But I'm here for HEMU. Like most citizens, I've attended the meeting last Monday and was shocked. But in addition to that, most people are satisfied generally with the service, but we all thought the rate was okay, we didn't really watch it. My home is also geothermal and I'm spending for the winter months, close to seven hundreds, over six hundred dollars a month. It's ridiculous. It's not just the rates. I'm more upset by something else that needs to be looked at, it's the responsibility of council. I think you people, and as governance of the city or responsibility, as the city's grown and expanded into different areas, to be equitable to all citizens and to hold people together so that we are governed the same. And that's not taking place. And the history of this thing is way back when Hudson City ran it. And one of the impetuses for the MU being formed was the city was overcharging for electric, using that extra money to do other city functions, including pay the city's electricity, which was not metered at the time. And so basically, the citizens that were paying for that, that lived in the city of Hudson and serviced by Hudson, were subsidizing to people that, and actually your addition was the first one that was in Mid-America, for getting the benefit of all the library, the city hall, late streetlights, all the services, but not paying their share. And that was part of the impetus. We're kind of back here again. And the city's moved to a point where one apartment complex is with Mid-America, the other two are in Hudson, we keep expanding. But the meeting was an eye-opener for me. I didn't, I just kind of figured maybe they're doing their job. That's not the case. Back when it started, or shortly after it started, there was a contract, which they haven't shown us yet. And by the way, your bills show how much you use and what the rate is, and when the rate jumps because you use more water, it shows that. There's nothing on the MU bills that show anything other than here's your usage and here's how much money you owe us. So we have no way of knowing and I was kind of blind and ignored it and so just kept paying the bill. But when I went to the meeting, the first thing, the contract they had with the county center REC, got a bailout clause. Just like anything else, you give us notice, you're going to quit the job, you're going to do whatever, and you had to give notice in advance and you could break the contract. It was only a two-year contract. The new contract came in, was a thirty-year contract, and God only knows why somebody signs a thirty-year contract for their supplier, but that's what was signed. And it had, it did not have that clause in there. So all of a sudden, this concern comes up and what does have you do? Who do they ask for advice? Oh, just go ask the REC, how can we get out of this? REC says, well, there'll be a penalty. Well, what will the penalty be? Oh, it'll be severe. It's like talking to the guy in North Korea. And they don't know what it will be. And so they're going on the assumption, and at the MU meeting, they're telling us, well, it's nine million dollars. Well, where do you get that figure from? Well, we have to pay for all electricity for the next fourteen years we won't have to use. Well, how do you know that? They haven't told you that. They're doing nothing to solve the problem. And the citizens raised some good issues on Monday, was, hey, the sewer treatment plant borders Mid-America, you can service it from there. A question raised, because the meeting went on and on for a while, till we realized and asked the question, do we have to buy all our electricity from them? No, we don't. Some citizens said, well, let's put solar out by the sewer treatment plant or do something, generate some of our electricity. Or as new homes come on, let them put panels on. MU does not give a rebate, and a lot of people do a refund if a homeowner has solar and generates more electricity than they use, you get credit for it. They don't do any of that. I thought I had an all-electric rate. I'm surprised to find out I don't because I kept asking, was told I did. The bottom line is, they're running scared, they don't know what to do, and they think it's good that they only lost four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. I don't think that's good. I don't think that's a way to run a business, it's not the way to treat the citizens. And quite honestly, then they say, well, we have no assets with which to do a buyout of any kind. Yeah, they got a building that they paid over two-hundred, close to three-hundred thousand for, and mortgaged it because they didn't realize it was an asset, that they could just buy with the cash they had. And then they turn around and the other thing they have as an asset is they've still got the reserve fund. And by the way, Mid-America doesn't charge a reserve fund, that comes out of their fee, which is a lot less per kilowatt hour than ours. If we gave them the system, Mid-America hopefully would take it over. They already have trunk lines around, but the advantage and the plea that goes back to treating all citizens alike inequitably is, we could control the city of Hudson because MU, or Mid-America surrounds us. And if we took, and they surround everything, MU's got. And so we could bring everybody within the city limits in the same provider, being treated equally. And it would get it out of your hands for management, it would put it in a company's hands for management, and quite honestly, Mid-America brings gas, natural gas, and I haven't heard a lot of complaints about that. You know, it's just a question of how we treat people. The other thing is, well, how do you do it? We've got leverage. First of all, we've got half a million dollars in assets plus our system. And I as an attorney, even though I can't practice anymore and I can't give advice, it's, to me, an inequitable, unconscionable contract. And a one-sided deal where they pull a quickie on us, put something in, it wasn't looked at carefully enough, and all of a sudden this clause isn't in. I think any judge that took a look at a contract like that, that was given for thirty years, where there's no restriction on the price, we pay a kilowatt hour or two kilowatt, two cents a kilowatt hour or over what they pay for their supplier, there's no bailout clause. And all they have invested is bringing the trunk line in. That's paid for itself already. We shouldn't have to give them anything other than what's necessary to get them out of their contracts with their suppliers, if their suppliers have them tied down for, and that can be done for, if their suppliers have them for six months or a year, we can still play that game. So I urge you to either get the board, repeat it, to do their job, or try to take it over and do the job that's needed. But it would do a lot of problems to make people in the community feel a lot better. It's not just the rate. It's time to rein it in and say we're a city of Hudson. Thank you.
Tony?
Not nearly as eloquent as Doug, so I'll just, I'll be brief. First, the fifteen acres that Tom and his crew want to develop, that's not right, that that's being held back for whatever reason. So whatever rebates were in place before need to be at a minimum in place so we get that property developed. I've long been a champion for residential development in town and anything we can do to help our local people develop property, we need to do that. So whatever HMEU is doing to prevent that from happening, I just think that's wrong. From a school standpoint, my bill hasn't gone up as much as DJ's has, but I will say I think some of that has to do with the fact that we've added some energy efficiency measures in the last several years at the school. So we've added new air conditioning units that are way more energy efficient than what we had prior. We've replaced all the windows and we've replaced all the LED lights. Things that we've done that all of our consultants have told us, your bill's going to go down, you're going to see a visible decrease in your bill. Our bill's gone up eighteen point seven percent in the last three years in spite of those, in spite of those energy. So in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we paid a hundred and thirty-two thousand for the year we're finishing that right now, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So huge, huge increases in our electricity. So we're paying it, we're paying it, we're paying that bill as property owners too. So I'm paying that bill, I'm paying what I pay at home for my electricity, and I'm paying the school's bill too, as is, as all of us here in the room. So again, I think everybody has great points, I would love to see something done about this because down the road, it could stifle development when people see what your utilities are in Hudson. So I'll leave it at those two points. Whatever we need to do to restore, to clear the way so Tom can develop the third edition of Upper Ridges, that needs to happen, and whatever we need to do to get these electric bills under control. Eighteen point seven percent, I want you to think about that. Eighteen point seven percent increase in power and all of the energy efficiency mechanisms we put in to try to drive that down. It's just not, I'm scared about what it would be had we not done that. So, thank you.
Anyone else on the HEMU topic? I will intend to put this on council agenda for January, for July eighth. I'll discuss it with our city attorneys, very possible any of that discussion will be in closed session. Because as you brought out, a lot of it comes down to a contract issue, and that will probably be a closed session type discussion, but thanks for your input, appreciate it. And feel free to leave or stay, whatever you wish. Community reports and recommendations.
Thank you.
Scott? Scott, Public Works?
Public Works. June twelfth, we opened bids for a plow, and that's on tonight's agenda for the acceptance of the highest bid. We approved Chapman Electric to wire up the new scoreboard at the baseball rec field. We discussed some tiling issues on the soccer field. We approved the purchase of a laptop for the Public Works Department. And then we had some discussion about drainage and ditch issues with Twin Oaks and Northern Cheer. And adjourned at seven forty-five.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Mayor's Task Force Committee meeting in June eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Number of things we discussed, downtime, streetscape project, Kate Smith, with some chamber, had a chamber alliance meeting where she met someone, so see if we can get somebody more involved with that. Kate will kind of run with that one. Talked about Trailhead Park and Depot projects, again, is some that we've still got on our list of things to do. We did talk about the Twin Oaks concept as far as the change from commercial into the multifamilies, the rebate agreements. Again, from a concept perspective, and what we'll have to do is check with Chrissy and Heather to see if this needs to go back into a Public Works, or a planning and zoning as well, as far as public hearings. But what I wanted at this point was what Twin Oaks is looking at, was whether or not we'd be willing to extend the type of rebate percentages they needed to pursue it further. So that's what we talked about and recommended to council to go ahead and do that portion of it. Prairie Ridges, talked about the development not happening there, it appears. No more discussions back from clauses. Upper Ridges, talked about development, but we've heard more tonight from a standpoint of potential impact there. Wellmark grant, we got seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for, from Wellmark for the three-point play scenarios talked about. We've got some ideas, we've already given preliminary comments to, to what we'll use and we just got to finalize those type of plans. Sergeant Park, we're continuing to work on that initiative. Okay. Public hearing, public hearing to amend the code of ordinances, open the public hearing to amend the code ordinances of the city of Hudson, Iowa by repealing provisions pertaining to stormwater drainage and replacing it with construction site erosion and sediment control of the city of Hudson code of ordinances. And this is basically to bring us into compliance with the DNR regulations. Any written comments, Chrissy?
No.
Any comments? Jack?
Jack, forty-three, fifty-one, Randshire Road. I would just like to comment on the construction site erosion. In my mind, at least, I'm not sure about the DNR and other EPA, whatever, air quality, whatever. Dust is an erosion as well as water. So I understand that normally speaking, it's left to the contractor, but if dust is an erosion problem and your ordinance is going to include construction site erosion, it ought to also include dust control as well as water.
Yeah, same comment or?
Well, no, same topic.
Okay.
But I see we're talking about site erosion. And on point fourteen, second page, erosion means a wearing away of land surface by running water, wind, ice, gravity, or other geological, natural, or man-made agents. And I just had my suspicions confirm this wasn't a locally drafted ordinance, it came from the DNR. And this thing is unenforceable. I hate to see ordinances on books that are unenforceable. You can't measure dust in the air, we have no standards for dust in the air. I haven't said anything about the dust in our community. I grew up on a farm out in central Nebraska, I know dust. But I've had times when I can't see the back of my lot because of dust coming off of Twin Oaks development. I accept that because there's just no way you can do that much work out in an old field without developing dust. Let's do it, eat the dust, and someday it'll be done. But to try to control it and set standards, and the same comes with running water, wind, ice. Where we're sitting right now, a glacier brought this soil in, and then the creek rearranged it with water. These man-made erosions are very small compared to natural, and then this addresses all of it. Wind, ice, water, geological, natural, it's just a bad ordinance. And the same can be said for the other one we're going to talk about tonight, but we'll just let the comment go there.
Challenges are, the requirements that come at us from the DNRs and the others, I can't disagree with your points whatsoever. I think from a standpoint of enforcement, I agree, tough to enforce. And maybe the next step after the ordinances are in, maybe someday DNR comes by with standards and abilities and how, I think this is just a step that.
They should be asked for that, what are the standards, how do we measure it before we do the ordinance?
Any other comments? Close the public hearing? No. Open the public hearing to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Hudson now by repealing provisions pertaining to stormwater runoff and replacing it with illicit discharge of the city of code, Hudson code of ordinances. Any written comments?
No.
More comments?
Did you just want to say ditto?
Leon, anything?
Nothing additional. Same comments.
Close the public hearing. Item A, general government. Hudson City Council retains the right to wait the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinances within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the first reading, ordinance eight-seventeen, ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Hudson, Iowa by repealing provisions pertaining to stormwater drainage and replacing it with construction site erosion and sediment control.
I make a motion to approve the first reading only.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The only reason I say that is because that does give us time that we can still talk to DNR regulators and ask them if they do have any plans for that or whether the case, but I don't want to hold this up by not continuing to move it forward, but I don't think we need to bypass any additional readings by any means with that one, so.
I agree with that.
And we're just bringing ourselves up to code.
Right. So we don't get fined for anything.
So it's a required thing. I agree with you in that, how do you regulate it, but it's a required thing that we have to do as a city, otherwise we'd be in violation, so.
My question for you, George, is when you were introducing this, you said it basically brings us up to code. Did you mean to say basically to suggest that? Oh, no. Not completely, or we're going to be.
Not completely or we're going beyond?
My basically is probably the wrong, correct, wrong word, right? It would bring us up to.
And no more than?
Right.
Just up to exactly?
Yeah, we didn't change any where you.
I've got a few things to say about 818, so I'll wait till the next point, but this is ridiculous and it sheds light on why bureaucrats and unelected officials like DNR goons are not good for us in these cases. And I hope that's on KWWI, but it's ridiculous.
It'll be.
And I'm going to illustrate that in 818. Go ahead.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
So if I vote no, I'm voting to keep Hudson out of compliance with the state.
Correct.
Basically, yes.
Can I abstain?
No.
I can't.
He could abstain, couldn't he?
For what grounds?
For what grounds?
You guys have a conflict of interest of abstain.
Okay.
Just for fun, I'm voting no.
Okay.
Okay. Ask us 31. Item B, Discussion Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance 818, Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa by repealing provisions pertaining to stormwater runoff detention and replacing it with illicit discharge. Motion to approve the first reading?
I would make that motion again to approve the first reading.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Can you go to page 31?
Yep.
Thank you. So what caught my eye in 818 specifically referenced something that affects me personally and a few of my neighbors out in Northern Tier, which is a pump and dump geothermal unit.
Okay, is that page thirty?
Well, yeah, the number two.
Geothermal pump and dump system discharges without the express written consent. So a building official may allow such discharge if it does not present or will not present imminent and substantial danger of the operation of MS4 public property, private property, environment, or to the health or welfare of the persons or waters, et cetera.
So basically, point two.
Right.
Gives ba- basically complete authority to a building official to determine whether my pump and dump system or my neighbor's pump and dump system, which pumps water out of a well through a geothermal unit and out into a privately owned pond, which is kind of a holding facility. It gives that building official authority to shut that down or, or actually, I think that the fault is it's shut down, but it gives the building official the authority to grant permission to use that as long as it doesn't affect any of that stuff, which is basically everything. Public, private, public property, private property, the environment. Now scroll down just a little bit to number three. Or, yeah, number point three two, so the exemptions. The following discharges are exempt from discharge prohibitions established by this chapter. Water line flushing or other potable water sources, landscaping, irrigation, or lawn watering. Now that one caught my attention because I'm, I'm, I'm not for regulating landscaping or, or lawn watering, but I know that in my yard and in many people's yards, you put fertilizer down on your lawn. When you water the lawn, there's going to be some fertilizer runoff, which is going to be way less clean than my pump and dump geothermal system, which is basically clean water out of the pump through my heating system and into the deal. So the building official has the authority to not let me use my heating source, which then puts me on the overpriced electricity. But there's an exemption for water that could be infinitely more polluted. And I understand this isn't an ordinance that we came up with. It's nonsense from the state of Iowa, the DNR. But I just, at length of talking too long.
I think, I think the only words that we have the latitude is whether it's building official, city council, public works director, mayor, somebody else, right? Because we put the building official word in there, didn't we? I don't recall.
Yeah, well, the only reason why we put the building official in is because he's the one that is certified to conduct the MS4 stuff.
My, so theoretically, he would only do that if he has satisfactory backup per state codes or anything else that says this is an illicit or violation. The other thing that it raises the question of is whether this would be, whether yours is grandfather relative to the date of the passing ordinance. I don't know if these are retro or not.
Well, and then the question is, if my geothermal goes out and I replace it, then am I?
Yeah.
So my whole point about going on this rant is you've, you've got bureaucrats in Des Moines or DNR, Washington DC, whatever hands this garbage down, that are on one hand saying, you maybe, if the, if the building officials have a bad day, you can't dump completely clean water in your own pond. But there's an exception for people who are watering fertilizer into the storm sewer, which frankly, I'm not really against that if it's done the right way. The point is just the inconsistency of it, which makes me think, now I only stumbled on this quite honestly because it affects me. Okay, so how many other things are in this nonsense that just, like the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing and it's just complete BS? Now I understand the whole deal about being out of compliance with the state. We don't want to be out of compliance with the state and get fined and punished that way. But is there any way to push back on these guys and go, guys, like figure out what you're talking about and make it logical and common sense before you bring it to us and, and make us, you know, swallow a pill we don't want to swallow?
I think the key word in that number two might be imminent and substantial danger.
Yeah.
So dumping it into your pond wouldn't, in my mind, represent imminent and?
That's the problem. It's in your mind.
Right.
I mean, who knows what?
Well, and I think that's.
Building official will have down the road.
Hopefully, we've got a trained official, you know, and, and certified people too. I agree, I agree with you a hundred percent here, you know, but in my head, I'm thinking, okay, there are a couple of locations potentially that I know of around even just this area that could have violations that are pumping into, you know, old facilities or pumping stuff that shouldn't be pumped into there. You know, I don't know that anybody, and again, this is not, not what you're saying because I agree and I think the way that we do it is discuss it with our state legislators because again, we don't have a whole lot of control over this. But I'm hoping, and I shouldn't say that, I know right now, we don't have a building inspector that's going to go around and look for picky things to get somebody roped up into. Now, do I think that there are times that this should be enforced? Absolutely. Because there are dangerous chemicals that are in some of the older dumps, some of the older places that have cars buried, batteries buried, things like that, that may be leaching into waterways. And I think that's what they're looking for in my head. But I agree that it needs to be more specific, but I think the only way we talk about that is to talk with, you know, who's the new guy that?
Derek Giddens. Who wants to come down?
Yeah.
I mean, Derek Giddens is going to love this. I mean, he's a DNR pawn, but anyway.
Another topic.
And the thing is, is if the building official has that off day, we have to realize that we employ him and so the citizens can bring it to us and to the mayor and ask.
Yes.
And another key word, like Scott was talking, is it says may. That may is he can, but not required to.
Because frankly, most of what.
He may allow. So the default is don't allow, but he may allow. See what I mean? So the default position is you can't do it, but if, if. You know what I'm saying?
That's most of the laws on the state of Iowa books, don't you think?
I don't know. This one just got me the wrong way and so that's all I'm saying.
And a lot of our ordinances, frankly, we follow on the basis of complaint base. If there's not a complaint, we don't necessarily, yes, Kate says, we don't.
You don't have time to go out and find it.
We don't want to start.
Not that we couldn't. You know, there are other communities that do drive around and look for filling pan on, and roofs that aren't working right and, you know, things like that, but small town Iowa. Anyway, sorry.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Reister?
No.
Bunz?
Aye.
31. We'll cross check with, Giddens wants to meet with me. I'll try to have this on the list of things for him to review. We'll see also, I'll, Chrissy checking the next couple of weeks to see if there are any standards that are being backed behind this thing at all. I don't know what they're doing, so.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out.
And she can reach out to the clerk.
I can reach out to the guy from DNR.
Because the other clerks are going to be dealing with this at the same time, so see if it's come up in other areas. Okay. Item C, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2492, Resolution for Approval of Road Closures for Hudson Days. So.
Second.
Discussion?
DJ, do you know if all of the road closures were on that email?
The one Jim gave, Holmes gave to me.
If not, you guys can review it and let us know if there's any additional.
I'm going to say yes, because I reviewed it.
Do you want me to pull it up?
If he had it.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll show up here in a second.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything and if, if we did, you know, we've still got time obviously before Hudson Days occurs.
Well, normally I do have the meeting before, but.
Right.
A little early this year.
That's why we thought. In case you wanted to look at it and change something.
We still have one more to fix it?
Yeah. Oh, look at how cool you are that you can click.
Leon stumbled on that. Can you read that too?
What?
Can you read that?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
It's been there for several months.
Uh, maybe not several, maybe a couple.
Chrissy, it's wonderful.
Can you not like sit there with your?
Yeah.
Can you read it?
Yeah, I agree with you.
If she doesn't keep moving it around, I'm sorry.
Ms. Kate, this will take care of the cars too, right?
Yeah.
But the second street not blocked?
Second street should be between Washington and Jefferson. Correct?
So where's the car show located?
Between, on second street between Washington and Jefferson and then all the way down on Jefferson. Both ways. Right? That's what we changed this year.
So it's, uh, Main Street.
Yeah, there's not.
Fourth and.
So the car show is going to be on?
Jefferson, just like it always is, but then they're also going to come up.
So they're parking on Main Street for the car show?
That was, I think that was meant for before.
But staging, I think.
Staging area, okay.
Actually, we don't need all of Main Street, but.
The only one that I see missing is Dale Drive from the recycling.
For the fireworks?
For the fireworks, but the cops just always block that out of safety.
Okay. So you, you don't necessarily have to have it.
They do that versus us, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
We could just have it adding Dale Drive to the extent needed for fireworks. Just put it that way.
Yeah, it's Dale Drive to fifth.
Block it all the way down to fifth.
Right, yes. Yeah, from.
Recycling Center.
Yeah, recycling center is fine to Fifth Street.
Okay, motion to approve of that adjustment?
I'll make, yeah, still moved.
Second. Roll call.
Hold on, sorry. Matt, did you?
She did.
Do you, okay. Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
4-0. Item D, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2494.
DJ?
So I was paying attention. Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2493, Resolution Accepting the Highest Bid for the Three Point Disc and that was for $200 to Chris Thor.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Reister?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
4-0. Item E, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2494, Resolution to Appoint Library Trustee Member to Fill Unexpired Term and that's for Al Clausen.
Was he on before?
Yeah, he was.
I thought he was at one time.
I'm pretty sure he was on before. Back in one of my terms on council.
Five hundred years ago?
Yeah, either the 86 or the whatever.
The 86. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
4-0. Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2495, Resolution for Approval of Agreement with Lincoln Savings Bank and the City of Hudson, Iowa for Interest Rate Structure and the Library Trust in Memorial CDs.
It's all moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just happy to see that they went back to Lincoln, Lincoln Savings Bank to see if they would match that of their rate, so.
I like that they're using local.
Roll call.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
4-0. Item G, Discussion Action to Approve Resolution 2496, A Resolution to Approve the Concept for Twin Oaks Addition. And again, this is the concept relative to the rebate structure, subject to going through anything else necessary required, cross checking with Heather and Chrissy doing more cross checking as far as any substance of the development itself. Obviously, this is for them to know that they have at least the financial ability to start doing the planning. If they do planning, they, they do have to come in with stuff to make sure that parking and all of that type of stuff meets code per zoning and we'll still check and see to what latitude as far as PD does require reviews, back throughs, and that will be a whole separate topic based upon Jackson, Leon's concerns that they raised. So, motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Discussion?
I saw this email that came, yeah, it was an explanation email. It was about, it was just kind of laying out the.
That was from the task force.
Yeah, yeah. And in here, if I can just read a section of this, it says, in order, in order for this change in plans to work for them financially, they stated it's imperative to have a ten year tax rebate as development agreement. So one of the questions that I had from that was, and I, I wasn't in the meetings, I'm not on Mayor's Task Force, so I wasn't part of the discussion, so maybe I'm way behind here. But Echo came to us with a concept, is that the right term?
Yeah.
And then they're wanting to change that concept.
Well, they, well, they originally had, in all discussions, had talked fifty unit high-rise apartment complex in ninety-four and ninety-five being the longer stretch, which was hoping for hotel, event center, restaurant, hopefully.
Can, can we look at ninety-four, ninety-five? That's right here, yes. I can hear it. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So what they came and said, we were hoping to get a hotel and that was one of the reasons we passed the hotel motel tax, so if we ever got it. They said, they just don't see that happening in the future.
With the development across the street.
With the development going on across the street, with all the other hotels coming up and with the fact that these apartments down here rented out so quickly, they would like to switch that from hotel motel. So on the left-hand side, that left square is where they anticipated as being a fifty, probably a four-story apartment complex.
With the high landing?
Yeah.
Is that ninety-five? Yeah.
Yeah, on that one. So that one, these twelveplexes and tenplexes that they've done over here by Slinky's office have, they've actually got them filled up with almost, with a waiting list. So they figure on the left side would be the twelveplexes, which would be four of them, which puts that into forty-eight units instead of the fifty. Just one thing of note here, Jack, I don't know if you remember this at all, but this is where we required them to have that as a potential someday through street if it ever gets on beyond that. So that would be a setback from there that they would not, we wouldn't allow any building on that to make sure that that's always available for a future street to carry on through to make sure that that's always available for a future street to carry on out through West. So that would be the four 12-plexes, and then the right-hand side would be the 10s. I want Chrissy to pull up now the other...
Is that supposed to be 94, is that 95 and 96?
Oh, the 95, and I've got it there. This is 95, my mistake. Or 95 and 96.
Okay.
96, this is actually the retention punt. Here's 96.
Okay, like this right here.
On that one, then I went ahead and drew in the 95 and the 96, okay? So that would be where the seven 10-plexes would go.
So here's my question. They came to us with a concept, and we put together a financial package for them, basically, right?
Yep.
Based on that concept.
Right.
And now they're wanting to change the concept, and then they're saying, in order...
Back up.
Okay.
There was never a development agreement done on those two lots.
Or a concept.
On the commercial.
Or even a concept.
On the concept. The development agreement, at this point, is on each, basically each phase. The single families is a development agreement. If they eventually get the duplexes up there, hopefully a Western Homes or somebody, that would be a separate development agreement. These would be a separate development agreement. So there's no rebate requirement, no rebate agreements or anything else, until they come and say, here's what we want to do, what can we work out together to come to the same scenario? And what they're saying here is, they see it many years out before the likelihood of a hotel would come up. They see a demand right now, because it is Hudson, and it's within three miles of Target and everything else, they think there's an appetite that they could even start construction of these this year. I put in a conservative, you know, three years of construction. If it went right, bam, it's up very quickly.
So that line in the email about them saying for it to be financially feasible for them, basically, it's imperative that they get this deal.
Yep.
I guess, maybe this is a dumb question, but why is, why is it on me or on the taxpayer to make this fighting, I mean, why are they, why are they dictating to us what needs to happen financially?
Probably from a standpoint that Waterloo and Cedar Falls, when they do developments there, Waterloo and Cedar Falls buy the ground and here you go.
Okay.
You know, I as mayor am 100% not in favor of speculation, as I've said publicly. I'm in favor of rebate agreements because we don't pay anything to the developer unless they're paying their taxes, at which then we give them a portion. So it's from that standpoint. Now, Echo, in these type of developments, they don't do it as Dalstrom. They do it as they set up limited partnerships, they'll have 20, 30 partners in there, and they have to do the financials on it. What's the cash flow on it, what's coming in from rentals, everything else? I don't know what their goal is as far as what they got to get, but the direct impression that Chrissy and I got, because of working with them for the last 45 days, is that it takes 100 and 75 for them to say, yes, we will do this now. Is it a possibility that they would do it at a future date with less? Possibly. I think now is the time to go ahead and do it. I asked them, if we don't have 175, will you not do it? And they said, yeah, we will not do it. It's got to have this for our numbers to work.
Okay. Next question. I think this is my last question. Probably not. So I was thinking about Dalstrom's neighborhood. Brent's a friend of mine, I'm all for capitalism, I love that he's doing all kinds of great stuff. But, so one of the ways that the residential portion of this, this southern part that's off the screen, was pitched to us, was, well, it's going to be like over by Eric Road, or it's going to be like over here, over here, in terms of lot size and the look of things and all that. And there's no way those guys would put up with, what is it, 70 apartments plus 40, 118 apartments, abutting their residential development? Just in terms of all that comes with that, as somebody mentioned, the traffic. There's a bunch of other things that I'm not even going to say that come with it. That...
Are you getting to the everybody wants it just not in my backyard?
A little bit. And frankly, from my standpoint, I mean...
It's a mile or a half mile away from you.
I mean, for me, there's a hill in the way, and I don't really care, it's not on my road, all that stuff. I'm just saying, like...
Here's my concern, and I was concerned about the 100%. I don't like the, I don't like the 100%. And George knows this, and we had this whole discussion, and that's a whole nother thing. But I think we get back to the discussion that happened before these other apartments came up. These are not $400 a month apartments. You know, these apartments are renting for $1,000 a month. So, and there is some low to moderate income standards in there that works out to be about one unit per building that they have to discount the rent on. But I think in today's day and age, and if you look through downtown Cedar Falls, you look through College Hill now, is building Brent's doing that new one over there, there are so many more of this. Coming from a 42-year-old that, you know, only has me, in my future plans, probably within the next five to 10 years, this would be my ideal living space as well, because it does come with that maintenance-free stuff, things you don't have to worry about, plus I don't have anything else with there. So I do think that you've got a cart before the horse thing too, with a, we're going to have all these problems, and it's going to be all these terrible people and whatever the case may, you know, that hasn't been...
I didn't say that.
No, you didn't say that. I didn't say that meaning that too, but we had heard that previously, and I don't think that those are the problems that are occurring, you know, with this, but it's a whole different. We also talked to Mayor's Task Force meeting about, this is prime location. I mean, truly, this is absolutely prime location, because you are Hudson School District, you are Hudson Taxes, which doesn't mean a whole lot of difference between Hudson and Cedar Falls, but you're three minutes from any of the amenities in Cedar Falls as well.
Not until we get the highway done.
Well, yeah, but...
I was going to say 20 once they get that stoplight and went there with a million cars.
Right, but anyway.
Easier to get in there than to collide with them.
Right. Anyway, the one thing that we talked about at depth with the Mayor's Task Force Council or Committee is that if you get a downturn in economy, this lane's going to sit there. And do we want to develop it now, make sure that it is the right way that we want to see it, have those things running in here? Or do we want it just to sit there and be empty if that downturn ever does, you know, does come? Which, your guess is as good as mine, is that ever happens. Now, the other part of that with the 100, like I said, and George knows, because I came and shaking my head in that committee meeting, saying, I don't like the word 100, you know, just because I always feel like if we've got even a 75 out the whole way, we're at least getting bits and pieces of it. But when he, Mr. Accountant over there does the math, and he'll explain this more, I'm sure, is that truly, the 100 times five years, and then the 75 times five years works out at an 8.7 or 875.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, whereas if we do 75 for 12, they're getting 900, we're giving them less money this way, by doing it this way. So the accountant part, that's the only thing that changed my mind with that, because I was like, oh, no. But I do think that this is prime ground, I think it needs to be done quickly. Not quickly, I mean, I don't think it needs to be built in the next two minutes. But I don't want to dilly-dally, and I don't want to give the impression to other developers in this area that we're going to make them jump through hoops before, you know, they, we help them develop, when there are other opportunities out there.
Here, this is just kind of my, I have to leave at five after, so I'm not walking out because I'm mad or anything.
Yeah, whatever. But that limits.
This, just kind of my, without talking to anyone or knowing anything, my hunch or my spidey sense is, putting together that residential development has been, has to have been a massive headache. I don't, the dirt, the mess.
The water, the rain.
The money that goes with that, yeah, the water, the rain. I don't know at what pace those lots are selling, if they're slower than anticipated. I would guess maybe, especially the one-acre lots. Again, I'm just guessing, I haven't talked to anybody. And we need money, and we need money quick. And so all of a sudden, the concept changes, because things down south are going as well as we anticipated, and we're in a pinch. And so then my question is, why is that my, or the taxpayers of Hudson's problem? And I'm not trying to be, you know, cold-hearted and a jerk, and I understand that we want to develop. And I, Tony Voss, of course Tony Voss is for this, because more living spaces mean more kids in the schools, and I think we're all on board with that. That's great. Quick money, quick development, a development, my belief has been all along, development is going to come to Hudson. Development is coming to Hudson, people are going to move to Hudson, there's going to be kids in the schools. That's all going to happen. And so...
They said that about Dyke about 20 years ago too, until Dyke had to share a school.
The problem is Dyke is 20 minutes from Cedar Falls, and Hudson is five. I mean, that helps, that helps us.
Cedar Falls is 15 minutes this way in the last 20 years.
Is this a similar agreement to what we did on these over here?
The one over there was 75 for 12 years, which comes out to a 900 total, so if you divide it by 100, it'd take nine years of full payment. In this case, 100 at five, 75 at five, add that together, it's 875. So it's basically given eight and three-quarter years of payout up there, where they're getting nine years of payout over here. So it's slightly less than the complex over here.
How many houses, is there any houses on there yet, or just lots?
There's three or four.
Three houses almost ready to build, almost ready to move into, one under construction, the other one's building permit is actually going across two lots.
Imagine you have a big bunch of people, and then you might have trouble selling those lots.
But that's up to them. That's the good thing.
And if you look at the concept of, that's behind the Cedar Falls Menards, where you've got some of those Western home things, but you also have apartments in those area. And I see it working.
I just think the way people live is changing. I do, I really think so. I think there's a whole lot more people that are in, there's, not everybody, but I, you know, a lot of times I see there's less kids per household, you know, and we can look at census stuff for that. But there's, there are more people too, that may not, A, have the ability, the capabilities, or the resources to do, like, my dad can fix anything at his house, he wants to live that way. My brother lives in a condo in Iowa City, because he doesn't, he doesn't know how, and he can't fix anything. Same thing with me, you know, same thing with my sister, that I think more people go to that easier maintenance living, potentially. Just the way the world is changing and the way the workforce is changing too, that I don't think you see everybody. I think it's a different, it's a different landscape.
Mark the tape on that comment about your brother.
Oh, he'll know. He's okay with that. He even sends out his laundry.
One more question.
Okay.
Yeah. The question is, if, I'm trying to think from their perspective, why do they like 100% for five years instead of 75% for 12 years?
Five-year building.
And, yeah, that's what I was wondering. So if, let's say, worst-case scenario, or maybe it's not worst-case scenario, maybe it doesn't matter. Let's say they build this up, and within five years, sell it off. And so somebody else is going to end up paying the taxes starting in year six. It would be the same agreement that carries forward. During that exchange, it, there's potential that the property could be revalued at a lower rate, is that right? Yeah. And is that, is that one of the reasons that you'd want 100% for five years? So you basically got five years to see if this is going to be viable, and if not, we'll offload it quick before we have to start paying taxes? I'm ready.
Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Reister?
Don't construe this as being against this categorically, but for now, it's not going to affect the outcome, and I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Three, one.
And I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay. Informational items, there's a number of them in there, reunited items. Oh, one more resolution, sorry about that. Item A, discussion action to approve resolution 2497, resolution approving the transfer of funds. And these is to get all the year-end fiscal transfers of funds per auditor and requirements and Chrissy's stuff.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Three, zero. Now, informational items, there's about four of them in there. Minor items, regularly scheduled meetings held at council chambers except the electric board and library board. Public safety meeting, June 27th, 2019, at 4:00 PM. Public Works Committee, July 10th, 7:00 AM. Mayor's Task Force Committee meeting, July 26th, 5:00 PM. Personnel add and finance committee meeting, July 22nd, 4:45 PM. Next council meetings, Monday, July 8th, 6:00 PM, and Monday, July 22nd, 6:00 PM. Before adjournment, just as a piece of public information. Accepted Chief Marsh's retirement effective September 27th will be his last day. So, it is efficient. Motion to adjourn?
When was, when is he...
September 27th.
September 27th will be his last day.
I worked for him when he was at the sheriff's office.
Did you?
Yeah, him and his dad both.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Lot, lot of time within them.